All set? Okay. Good evening, South Windsor. We're here this evening for a special work session at 6:00. And this evening, we're going to be discussing a possible ordinance for the public safety in municipal buildings concerning concealed carry on town property. Concealed carry means that the weapon, if you own a weapon, a sidearm, that you would conceal it under your shirt, your clothing, in a purse, anything like that. So that is the discussion item that everyone... Catherine, do we have the possible ordinance printed elsewhere for others to read? No? If anyone would like copies, there could be some copies. So this evening, I'd like to start the conversation. And we entertain conversation this evening from our citizens to hear what they have to say. But before we begin, I would like our town attorney, if he could, to read the ordinance for us, since he drafted it, with the help of the police department, Mr. Maniscalco, if you don't mind. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Call the meeting to order. We need a roll call, please. That's all right. She's running out the door. Sorry. Speedy over here. All right, Counselor Evans?
Here.
Counselor Kowalski?
Here.
Counselor Lopez? Counselor Paterna?
Here.
Mayor Pendleton? Present. Deputy Mayor King?
Here.
Counselor Kozakowski?
Here.
Counselor Lidecker? And Counselor Gamble. Great. Now, thank you, Deputy Mayor King. Now, I ask the town attorney to please read the ordinance for us, if you could. And if the folks, when they come up, they could ask questions about certain sections of the ordinance, and that's what this is for, and hopefully, we can answer anyone's questions.
Okay. Good evening. So, the ordinance reads as follows. Town of South Windsor, an ordinance regarding public safety in municipal buildings. Section 1, Purpose and Authority. The purpose of this ordinance is to provide for the good order, peace, health, safety, and welfare of the town and its residents, in the management of the business of the town while inside any town building. And whereas. Chapter 3, Section 305 of the Town of South Windsor Charter states that the Town Council shall have power to make, alter, and repeal ordinances or resolutions not inconsistent with this charter and the general statutes of the state for the execution of the powers vested in it by this charter, for the government of the town, and the management of its business, and for the preservation of the good order, peace, health, and safety of the town and its inhabitants. And whereas. The Town of South Windsor Personnel Rules and Regulations states that the town maintains a zero tolerance policy with respect to violence or the threat of violence in the workplace by any of its employees, customers, the general public, and/or anyone who conducts business with the town, and that it is the policy of the Town of South Windsor to promote a safe environment for its employees, free from violence, threats of violence, harassment, intimidation, possession of weapons, and other disruptive behavior in the workplace. Whereas. Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-148(c)(7h)(11) provides the town with the power to provide for the health of the inhabitants of the municipality and to do all things necessary or desirable to secure and promote the public health. And whereas. Connecticut General Statute 7-148(c)(7h)(13) provides the town with the power to make and enforce police, sanitary, and similar regulations and protect or promote the peace, safety, good government, and welfare of the municipality and its inhabitants. And whereas. Article 1, Section 15 of the Connecticut Constitution grants every citizen the right to bear arms in defense of himself and the state. And whereas. The Federal Gun-Free School Zone Act, 18 U.S.C., Section 922Q2A prohibits anyone from knowingly possessing a firearm at a place the person knows or has reasonable cause to believe is a school zone. And whereas. Connecticut General Statute 29-35A prohibits the carrying of a pistol or revolver without a valid permit or license to carry such pistol or revolver issued pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 29-28. And. Whereas. Connecticut General Statute 29-35B states that the holder of a permit issued pursuant to Section 29-28 shall carry such permit on one's person while carrying such pistol or revolver, and shall present his or her permit upon the request of a law enforcement officer who has reasonable suspicion of a crime for purposes of verification of the validity of the permit or identification of the holder, provided such holder is carrying a pistol or revolver that is observed by such law enforcement officer. And. Whereas. Connecticut General Statute 29-28E states that the issuance of any permit to carry a pistol or revolver does not thereby authorize the possession or carrying of a pistol or revolver in any premise where the possession or carrying of a pistol or revolver is otherwise prohibited by law or is prohibited by the person who owns or exercises control over such premises. Section 2, Definitions. Municipal building, for purposes of this ordinance, shall be the same as set forth in Connecticut General Statute 7-122B, as may be amended from time to time, and means any building or facility owned or leased by municipal government in the state of Connecticut and open to the public or intended for such use, inclusive of any municipally-owned buildings... I'm sorry. ...and municipally-owned outbuildings, sheds, warehouses, garages, or buildings of a temporary nature located within the Town of South Windsor. Assault weapon, for purposes of this ordinance, shall have the same meaning as set forth in Connecticut General Statute 53-202A, as amended from time to time. Deadly weapon, for purposes of this ordinance, shall have the same meaning as set forth in Connecticut General Statute 53A-36, which means a weapon, whether loaded or unloaded, from which a shot may be discharged, or a switchblade knife, gravity knife, billy, blackjack, bludgeon, or metal knuckles, or electronic defense weapon. The definition of deadly weapon in this ordinance shall be deemed not to apply to the lawfully permitted carrying of a pistol, revolver, or electronic defense weapon. Disorderly conduct, for the purposes of this ordinance, shall have the same meaning as set forth in Connecticut General Statute 53A-182. Electronic defense weapon refers to any weapon by which an electronic impulse or current is capable of immobilizing a person temporarily, including a stun gun or other conductive energy device. Peace officer, for purposes of this ordinance, shall be the same as set forth in Connecticut General Statute 53A-39, as may be amended from time to time. Firearms, for purposes of this ordinance, shall be the same as set forth in Connecticut General Statute 53A-319, as may be amended from time to time. Pistol or revolver, for the purposes of this ordinance, shall have the same meaning as set forth in Connecticut General Statute 53A-318, as may be amended from time to time. Employee of the Town of South Windsor, for purposes of this ordinance, shall be the same as set forth in the South Windsor Code of Ethics, and means any person receiving a salary or wages from the town or for services rendered, whether full-time or part-time. Official, for the purposes of this ordinance, shall be the same as set forth in the South Windsor Code of Ethics, and means any person holding elective or appointive office in the government of the town, except justices of the peace, and shall include the town treasurer, the town attorney, the town clerk, members and alternate members, if any, of the Town Council, the Board of Education, the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Board of Library Directors, the Housing Authority, committees appointed to oversee the construction improvement of town facilities, or any board, commission, or agency that exercises legislative or judicial functions or financial authority. Section 3, Prohibitions, Rules, and Regulations. A. No person shall knowingly possess a firearm in a place the person knows or has reasonable cause to believe is a school zone, as defined in federal law 18 U.S.C. 922Q2A. B. No person shall possess an electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver while inside any municipal building without a valid permit to carry such electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver. C. Any person possessing an electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver while inside any municipal building shall keep such electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver concealed from view so as to promote peace, good government, and welfare of the town. D. The possession by any person of a deadly weapon, assault weapon, or firearm other than an electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver while inside any municipal building of the Town of South Windsor is hereby prohibited. E. The possession by any town employee of a deadly weapon, assault weapon, or any firearm while inside any municipal building of the Town of South Windsor during their time of employment is prohibited. F. Upon request by any peace officer, any person possessing an electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver while inside any municipal building will duly provide evidence of a valid permit to carry such electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver. G. Placards providing notice of the prohibitions and rules contained in this ordinance shall be posted at all entrances to all municipal buildings. H. The provisions of this ordinance shall not apply to any peace officer charged with the preservation of the public peace while engaged in such peace officer's official duties. Section 4, Enforcement. Upon the observed violation of this ordinance by a peace officer, the offending person shall first be asked to comply with the ordinance and the peace officer's instructions. If the offending person fails to comply with the peace officer's instructions, then such actions shall be considered a violation of this ordinance and shall result in the offending person being asked to leave the municipal building by the peace officer. If, after failing to comply with the instructions of the peace officer, and the offending person fails to leave the municipal building, then such action shall constitute... Well, shall constitute a subject to arrest for trespass. There was a change there. So it just needs to be a little bit wordsmithed. That's the ordinance.
Thank you, Attorney Corilla. Now, for the citizens, we're going to keep the parameters around the ordinance. If anyone has any questions, you're more than welcome to please come up and speak at the lectern and give us your name and your address, other opinion, comments, questions, concerns, anything that you would like to say concerning this ordinance. Tonight is a time for open discussion, and I see a hand. Mr. Dillon, come on up. Thank you.
I just have one question. Is this going to be like the format for the council meetings? Right now, you can ask questions and get a response?
No, sir. That's why I'm inviting folks to come up and speak at the lectern, give us your name and address, and please pose your question. We have our experts here, which is our town attorney and our police officers when it comes to the law and enforcing this ordinance, to answer the questions of the citizens. That's why I called the work session. You're welcome. Come up, please, sir. And there's a little button right at the base of the microphone. If you hit the... It'll turn it on. It should turn red. There you go.
My name is Floyd Baranello. I'm a resident of South Windsor. I'm also a member of CCDL, which is the gun rights organization for the state of Connecticut. I'd like to ask a question because this seems like it's a different... The last time we discussed this issue, this had to do with open carry within the town and the town buildings, town property, et cetera. The way this was read, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it goes past open carry, straight to concealed carry. Is that correct?
Attorney Corilla, I don't believe that the ordinance has been changed since the first time that it came before the council.
The draft ordinance was revised by me as of June 2nd. That's the last version that I have. And it deals with concealed carry, right? Requires people with a valid pistol permit to conceal, carry while in a municipal building.
But this ordinance is forbidding a person with a permit from carrying concealed. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, from carrying. I didn't hear what you said.
From carrying concealed. Is that...
No, no. It's requiring you to carry concealed, yes.
Okay. I'd like the members here to consider, and the public to consider, what was just read as part of this ordinance, where it was cited the federal laws that prevent the carrying of firearms on school property nationwide. That didn't work very well in Texas recently, did it? And as a result of that, Congress shoved through gun control laws, which, among other things, had red flag laws. Red flag laws, for people that are not aware, is that if there's a threat or a perceived threat, that's reported to the police, and the police investigate, and they investigate by going through social media and people's contacts to say, Joe Blow, whoever it might be, represents a threat. He's on social media brandishing guns, saying, "I'm going to go shoot up a school. I'm going to do this. I'm going to do that." That didn't work very well this past weekend, because that law went into effect two weeks ago. So a lot of these laws do nothing, except make people feel good, and the laws continue to get broken. Aside from that, let me just state my case. I'm 78 years old. I don't run very fast. I don't jump very high. I've had my permit now for 15 years or so. I've been around firearms since the 60s, over 50 years. In the last 10 years, I've had over 500 hours of firearms training, pistol, shotgun, rifle. I consider myself to be very well-trained in the use of firearms. I don't go anywhere. I don't leave my house without a firearm. And the reason why is these gentlemen can't be with me. They can't be with me when I go shopping. They can't even be with me when I come here. This is the first time that I've seen police officers here in the council office for a meeting. Now, I know they're not here for our protection. They're here to represent and answer questions. But think about it. People in here, without any security whatsoever, were sitting ducks. This is a gun-free zone, or you want to make it a gun-free zone. It's not the world we live in. I've taken steps to protect myself. I will protect anybody here if there was a threat to them. But I think limiting people's opportunity to exercise their Second Amendment rights is beyond the scope of this panel and this town. The Supreme Court just said you can carry guns for your protection. Now, the full ramifications of that decision have not come down yet. The state of New York is doing their very best to counter that decision. They're probably going to go to an appellate court and subsequently up the chain, and they'll get those laws slapped down, because the Supreme Court doesn't fool around with this. It's pretty clear where the Supreme Court stands. And I think you should make any decision regarding firearms in this town, thinking about the recent decisions that the Supreme Court has made. It's not a bad thing to carry a gun. I carry one. There's several other people in this room that have guns besides the police officers. I'm permitted to carry, by permit, my firearm in 40 of the 50 states. I don't go anywhere where I can't carry a gun.
Thank you, sir. And I'd just like to address that. I'd like to be clear. This ordinance is not stating that we will be banning guns from municipal buildings. This ordinance is only the question... Because it is your constitutional right, absolutely, to carry a weapon, except school grounds. This ordinance is only addressing open carry versus concealed carry. That's all it is.
I'm corrected. I misunderstood. I thought it was... I thought, as it was read, I thought it was banning carrying a weapon in municipal facilities and schools.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Appreciate it. Please, come forward.
Good evening. Paul Bernstein, 191 Newbury Road in South Windsor. So, the first gentleman had some confusion. I also have some confusion. So I'm going to ask the town attorney, could you read for me, please, Section 3, Item C?
Section 3, Item C. Any person possessing an electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver while inside any municipal building shall keep such electronic defense weapon, pistol, or revolver concealed from view so as to promote peace, good government, and welfare of the town.
Okay, so, to the point made before, this ordinance is the same one that was read two weeks ago.
Absolutely.
Nothing has changed. So as I listen to that three or four pages of content, the only thing that stands out to me in terms of how this is different from standing law would be what you just read. This is essentially banning open carry. Other than that, everything seems consistent with what I would consider standing law. Anyone holding a permit can carry a weapon, and they're free to do so. Is that accurate? Is there anything else in here that is not consistent with what you would consider standing law?
This is designed to address the Town Council's instruction to draft an ordinance that requires the concealment of weapons while in public buildings. So if you have a legal permit to carry a pistol, revolver, or electronic defense weapon, the ordinance would require you to conceal it while inside the building.
Okay. That's all I wanted. I just wanted clarification on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Please come forward.
My name is Jim Kapchunis, 1 Christine Lane in South Windsor. Been here a lifelong resident. I'm just wondering, why are we passing this kind of ordinance? I mean, then are we going to go and have everything as a gun-free zone? I mean, I work at the University of Connecticut. It is a gun-free zone there. I deal with it every day. I'm in an area where a lot of people come in, and I'm a number-one target for something to happen like that, like Virginia Tech or anything like that. I worry about that every day. I don't want to have that happen here, in this town. I mean, especially... The one who really upset me was when Chris Murphy wanted to defund school resource officers. I know in... I have kids in the school, and it's very upsetting to have them even talk about that. I know I'm getting off on a tangent with this, but it's just... Need to think about these things. People need to protect themselves. These guys aren't going to be around within the first few minutes. They're just going to come for cleanup when something happens. I mean, I worry about it. My sister lives in Minnesota, right near Minneapolis, and she travels to Minneapolis every day, near where everything happened. And I just get concerned with that. It's a very scary world now. But I mean, I just wonder why this is happening, and why do we even really need to address this when we have that you're going to have concealed carries? Is it because people are afraid of Mr. Balboni carrying open carry? There's other people that do it. You know, it's just... At least, if you see someone, you know you're a threat, or something like that. That's the way I look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kapchunis. Good evening, Mr. Edwards. It's on. You're good.
Awesome. Hello.
Hi.
Dan Edwards, 131 Hilton Drive. Appreciate the open work session here. This, I guess I was a little confused. You mentioned this was designed to address the Town Council's request to draft an ordinance, but we also have our town manager here, who, although relatively new in his tenure, I think three years, right? The prior town manager was in town for 23-plus years. So I have to... And again, I'm not sure if you looked through the notes. Is this an issue that's come up in the past that he's talked about addressing? Yeah. Okay. No, that's fair. I mean, I've looked through the news, but I guess last time when you were here, you did mention, I think somebody had asked a question about other towns that had implemented it. I think at the time, you didn't have any information. Wonder if you had a chance to look through that and maybe could share some information or light or how this was drafted.
There are a variety of towns that implement similar laws in a variety of ways. At a very high level, the town has the ability to regulate its property and its operations how it sees fit, as long as it's a legitimate connection between that regulation and a legitimate public governmental concern, right? So keeping the peace and good order and operations of the buildings is certainly within the town's purview and within their authority, under both your charter and under Connecticut law. So how towns go about that and what different towns have done, it spans the gamut, right? Many towns have enacted prohibitions and rules related to how to carry or not carry weapons in the workplace through their personnel policies. So South Windsor has a personnel policy that prohibits the possession of weapons in town hall, town buildings, right? Windsor has a similar prohibition. Its ordinance says town employees shall not possess firearms. Its ordinance says town employees shall not possess firearms, period. Pretty straightforward. Taland has a similar personnel policy. Possession, use, or threat of use of a deadly weapon by town employees is not permitted while on work, while on duty, on town property, including in a town vehicle, or in a private vehicle when the vehicle's being used for town business, or if the private vehicle is parked on town property while the employee is on duty. So, Taland says no guns in the workplace, and don't bring it to work in your car and leave it there, right? So, that's Taland. East Hartford, their personnel policy is similar to South Windsor's. The town at East Hartford will not tolerate acts of threats or violence to possession, carrying, brandishing, or use of weapons, or dangerous instruments, or threatened, or actual destruction damage, or theft of property in our workplace by employees, by the general public, or anyone who conducts business with the town. So, they go so far in their personnel policy to try to regulate the interaction between the town and the public that's coming to town hall to conduct business. That's, that's the personnel policies. Some towns regulate the use of firearms and the possession of firearms about all town property. So, East Hartford, their park and recreation ordinance says no person in any town park or recreational facility shall discharge any arrows, darts, or other dangerous missiles or projectiles, or discharge, or carry firearms, except for law enforcement officers and persons. Another
So, I'm sorry, so that East Hartford is banning firearms from all of their parks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Similarly, Hartford does the same, right? It should be unlawful for any person to discharge or have any firearms or fireworks in any park. That's Hartford. Bloomfield says a similar thing, but theirs is under a hunting and firearms ordinance, says no person shall punk, park, no person in a park shall hunt trap, or pursue wildlife, or use, or carry, or possess firearms of any description, or other forms of weapons potentially inimical to wildlife or dangerous to human safety. So, on town parks. For some reason, Manchester thought it was important to protect their public water supply, so you can't have, you can't carry a gun on public watershed lands in Manchester. Woodbridge just has a straight-up ordinance prohibiting possession of firearms in any town, municipal building.
Oh, Woodbridge, that's right, yes, I did read that. They prohibit it from all municipal buildings?
Yep.
Yeah.
So
These are current on the books.
Yep, yep. So, it scan, it spans the gamut, how each town wants to regulate its own workplace, its own buildings, its own facilities, and the interaction of municipal employees with the public, whether that be in a building, or in a park, or in, in general.
Now, do we know how many of those policies were drafted in with respect to being scared of one person?
Any other questions, Mr. Edwards?
Uh, no, no. I mean, it, it is interesting, though, that, you know, this, again, from this guy's perspective, who's been to town council meetings over the past few years, that is, you know, I feel bad we've kind of wasted our town, you know, our town attorney's time on, on this matter when it was really, you know, two individuals that have, you know, written or spoken about an issue. I mean, we've had beavers in the past. It doesn't mean the town has to do anything about it. Again, I think we need to be open to other people's perspectives. And again, great, we're having a community-wide conversation, also good to see our police department here, but again, and I, I really don't like that look, as you gave it to me again last time, we've got to be open to other people's perspectives. And that means Mr. Balboni, he's been denied multiple appointments, and the reasons given, you know, was somebody wrote a letter, hey, we should get this gun ordinance. I think Rick came up quite well, and showed that, there's really no difference. We see a seventy-eight-year-old man right behind us. Is Mr. Bernstein intimidated by him? I don't know, just, it seems like there's better things that we could do with our time. That's all.
Thank you. I'd just like to clarify, there's more than two people. Many citizens have contacted me, many residents have contacted other council members, so there is more than just two people that requested that something be brought forward, just to talk about, and to discuss, and find out what we're doing. And a work session is meant to do town business, and that's what we're hoping to do here, is have open communication and conversation of anyone with, it's all about transparent government, it's the citizens, come and speak, come ask your questions. Mr. Dillon, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tom Dillon, thirty-four, Barber Hill Road. I guess my first question is, if we're going to have unopened dialogue, what was the mitigating factor, or factors, that had this created, this ordinance created? Five people wrote letters? Ten? I mean, I know, remember when we had the proposed talk of banning anything from a dirt bike quad to my grandkid's twelve-volt battery-operated Jeep? There was one person that complained, so is there any background you can offer? And it doesn't have to be an exact figure, I'm not going to FOI any documents, I'm just curious, is it twenty, hundred people that have made comments?
I would say about twenty, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. Let me see, I wrote, I wrote a couple things down, so let me
And please understand, this is a possible ordinance.
I, I understand, and that's why I want to be able, that's why I, rather than just stand here and pontificate to you at a meeting, I like the back and forth, so
I do too, Mr. Dillon.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah, absolutely, I'm sorry.
Mr. Dillon, just in that, in that group, there are also town employees who approached us about this.
As an ex-town employee, I can understand. As a ex-service member, I kind of have a harder time understanding. I am a proponent of the Constitution, all of it, even the parts I don't particularly like. You know, I just talked to my old captain in New Hampshire, he retired and went to the promised land while I'm still down here. They open carry on school grounds. The only place they can't carry open carry in New Hampshire is in a courthouse. They don't have a whole lot of issues. I think it's more an educational thing, whereas the people, the town employees that have complained or made comments, I would rather, much rather have people that are open carrying responsibly than having somebody come in with nefarious thoughts that's carrying a concealed weapon that they don't know about. I'm not a huge proponent myself personally with open carry, but the law does allow it, and I don't talk against. I remember when I was fourteen years old, we'd go bird hunting, we'd walk down Main Street, shotgun slung on our shoulders, Charlie Jurgis would come up and say, hey, how you guys doing, you get anything yet? It's a different time. If you guys now know the name Robert Creemo, I'm sure as we find out more information about the shooting in Illinois, we're not going to like what we hear. I do not like what I've heard about Uvalde, Texas. We have all these laws, and all these laws that could have prevented something, potentially, are ignored by the government aspect of this, and yet we pile more laws on to take away people's rights. If Tom Dillon comes in here and is brandishing a weapon or is open carrying in a bad situ, bad way, then Tom Dillon should be arrested. We should not, you know, I get in a car crash tonight, are we going to take away cars? That's the latest thing. We're going to take away cars, we're going to govern them to twenty-five miles an hour? As a firefighter, that would have saved me a whole lot of blood in a career. Would you agree? So, I kind of, you do have the absolute right to make this law. I'm surprised that you haven't gone all the way to ban carry at all. So, I'm very surprised about that. So, that means I can come in the town hall with a chest rig, with a forty-four, forty-five caliber pistol, which is designed to take out a grizzly bear, and as long as I have my medium-sized T-shirt over it, so nobody can tell what it is, I'm legal. So, it's kind of like the common sense thing. The reason you have a panic button behind that dais is not because of the public coming in here and creating havoc, it's because the mayor and one of the councilmen got into a fistfight at a council meeting. It goes back a few years.
Not me.
But it's not the public. If, if, if you guys are up here in a gun-free zone, or potentially, right?
No, not
It's, you're not proposing that, but you could. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm surprised you're not. You guys are the target of the people that come in here that are mad, not me. I wouldn't necessarily want, I don't like gun-free zones, myself. And on, and the only flip side is, I'm disappointed in what's gone on throughout the country, and there's no disrespect to these two gentlemen. The Supreme Court has ruled that the police have no duty to protect me or you. It has proven itself in Florida, New York City, two police officers went into a subway car with a conductor, and a guy got attacked, long story short, by a wanted murderer on the subway car, and they waited in the car until the guy had the murderer subdued and then came out. He tried to sue the city in New York. New York says the police have no responsibility, no duty, to act, to put themselves in danger to save my life, or yours. Doesn't mean every cop's going to do that. Who is responsible for their own safety? Each and every individual in this room. How they choose to see fit. Now, weapons may or may not be your choice. You may not, you may hate guns, you may not want them, but people go around carrying, especially in this environment with everything going on, to protect themselves and potentially others. I think that needs to be thought of. You can ban open carry here, I'm disappointed, I couldn't care less. If you make it a gun-free zone, that's more of a danger to you folks and the employees in this building than it is to me. So, just my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. I would say thank you for your concern in protecting the mayor, but yeah.
Madam Mayor?
We do, yes, go ahead, Councilor.
I just wanted to add, you know, in regard to your question about how many people had, had expressed, or where this came from, I know at our previous meeting on June sixth, I can say that I personally was reached out to more people than attended that meeting and spoke out against the ordinance, or in, in relation to the ordinance. So, I think that's why it's so important that we have this opportunity for yourself and others.
I welcome the opportunity and thank you.
So, yeah, so just in comparison, I had had many more people than what, who we heard from on June sixth, so.
I, I guess if I could add to that, on Facebook, you tend to flip through and watch the videos, there's auditors that go around, they're First Amendment auditors, they film in places that are open to the public, and there's gun rights activists, and they walk around with a shotgun slung across their chest, and the police come up and do what they feel is necessary. And the only thing, if the person is legal, carrying legally and not brandishing it and going crazy, is they should go to the person that called and say, hey, this person is well within his rights, his constitutional right to carry firearms down, down Main Street. Rather than get your ID, I want to know why you're doing it. If you're not breaking the law, you're not breaking the law, right? Just because somebody doesn't like what I'm doing, and just because some people may not like me coming up here and pontificating and giving me my, my thoughts, is my constitutional right to come up and thank you for the extra time tonight, but at least three minutes, I can come up here and be the biggest jerk in the world, and then you can shut me up when I have to walk away. But I do get that three rights, it's constitutional right. That's how I view this, it's constitutional right. If there were instances where it was being manipulated or abused, I would say, yeah, let's go for it, because I want the whole community safe, too. My family is still in this community, who I care about more than most. If it was a real issue, I'd say, go for it. I don't perceive this as being a real issue. And I'm not discounting anyone that may have called. This gentleman is doing everything according to the law. In fact, I have to go through more background checks and everything else to get a pistol permit, and to be able to have weapons. And yet, we all know that you can go out tomorrow and buy a shotgun or buy a pistol on the street, and that person's going to come in here and wreak havoc on some people somewhere, and kill six from a rooftop in Highland Park, Illinois, and there's not a damn thing you can do about it, except take him into custody or kill him when he resists. That's the nature of the beast of our country, of our freedoms.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions, concerns, suggestions, ideas? Total open communication this evening, folks. That's what it is. Please, come forward. Ms. Copper, thank you.
So, my name is Lisa Copper, I live at One Autumn Drive, and I will say that, to be honest with you, I think that I would prefer to have no guns on municipal property, but I think having them concealed is a good step, because what happens is, when people see things that are around, they, it develops mistrust. And one thing that can happen, you know, in other words, if I see somebody with a gun, I'm thinking, okay, what, what is that person wearing a gun for? You know, if somebody, I saw somebody in a grocery store one time, probably quite a few years ago with a rifle. I'm thinking, okay, what need does that person have to bring a rifle to the grocery store? They're not hunting, obviously, they're going grocery shopping. And it made me uneasy that somebody was thinking of that, because I'm wondering, what is driving that person to do that? What is their motive? My thinking is, if you keep it concealed, at least you can say, they're not saying, I have a gun, I can do anything with it that I want. Because the people who have guns who are responsible know that they're responsible, but you're having something that's going to cover everybody. So, what we're saying is, we don't know about those other people who come in with guns, we only know about the people here who are responsible gun people. You know, they're gun owners, they know what they're doing, they're responsible. There could be some people out there who aren't. So, it seems to me that if you at least keep it concealed, it makes it a little harder to get to, I don't know, maybe the police have an opinion on this. Most people I know assume that guns aren't brought on to town property. I would assume that when I go to Veterans Memorial Park, nobody has a gun in their, you know, beach bag or whatever. When I go to the library, I'm assuming that. Obviously, it's not a correct assumption. But I think that it might be very good to keep them concealed. I would be interested to know what the police department would have in terms of their thoughts. Many people I know who are concerned about having guns on property would probably have preferred to have a gun-free zone. But since that's not where you're going, I would support the, I would support having them at least concealed, and I would be interested to know if the police has, have any thoughts on this subject, since they said they did this in conjunction with the police department.
Absolutely, that's why there are experts here this evening to address any issues or concerns, and if, Officer Cleverden, if you could address that, that would be fantastic. And thank you for being here to assist us with this.
Good evening, Sergeant Mark Cleverden, South Jersey D.D.
Sergeant, sorry.
Not a problem. Thanks for having us tonight. To, to address your question, I know, if you could just rephrase it so I can hear it again, so I can make sure I'm going to answer properly.
It seems to me that if you keep it concealed, it makes it a little harder to get to. Say you're having a big argument sometime, and all of a sudden you say, wait a minute, I'm trying to get out of the picture of this, because most people drop the gun, or somebody goes off, you know, if it's concealed, does that make it a little harder to get to?
I, I think you're talking about the expertise of the person who's carrying the weapon?
Right.
The, the training they have with that weapon?
Well, not the training, their own emotional strength.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not quite sure I feel comfortable answering that, and the only reason I'm going to say that is because, you know, I, I think our responsibility for being here today is to talk about what current laws are on the books related to firearms, and what this would do if we had to respond to a situation where, if this ordinance was put in play, how we would handle that appropriately, you know, because I think that's a little easier to answer, because then we can say, okay, well, here's what, here's what we have, and this is what we're working with, and this is how we're trying to resolve this issue, as opposed to hypotheticals, those are extremely difficult for us to kind of put in
So, maybe you could tell us a little bit about the process?
Yeah, so, so, I mean, and, and these are all ifs, so, I mean, if we're talking about, you know, i- if the ordinance itself is put into, put into play, and if we're using the example as, as a meeting like this, and someone is, is open carrying with the ordinance on the books, you know, if you were contacted to come, come here to address it, our first goal would be education, okay? Our first goal would be to talk to the people who are in, the person, whoever's violating the ordinance, to make sure they understand what the ordinance is, they understand that it's clearly posted, whether it's on the doors, whether it's, it's been enacted, so they know what it states, all right? Because our primary concern is making sure people are aware of what is legal and what's not legal. So, we want to make sure we let them know, okay? So, we're telling them what it states and what they need to do. From that point on, obviously, we would let them know that if they are in violation of that ordinance, they're, per the, per the ordinance, they'd be asked to leave, all right? You know, and so we would ask them to leave. If, if at that point in time, they would not leave the premises, wherever that may be, we would then, you know, talk about a trespassing statute as the next kind of step. All this is being done, trying to gain compliance without using any force, without escalating the situation, okay? Sometimes that takes time. We find most of the time when we handle situations, nine We find most of the time when we handle situations, 99.99% of them, we can do so by verbally communicating with someone and gaining compliance that way. We would obviously try to do that in most of these circumstances. You know, if it did come down to the fact where we had to make a criminal arrest, a criminal trespass, trespass, excuse me, first degree violation, which is a Class A misdemeanor, so that could be handled with a misdemeanor summons, or it could be handled with an onsite in custody arrest. Either way, the goal would be to gain compliance through that communication aspect, to make sure we're de-escalating, to make sure we're using our words, to be able to see what we can do to have that person, you know, safely and, you know, efficiently exit, whatever the situation may be. So, you know, I hope that answers some of your questions, obviously.
I think if I could, if I, I think, Terry, maybe if I can interject here, and I'm not sure I quite understand, I wanna make sure I do understand it correctly. I think you're asking, does a concealed carry weapon slow down a person's response? If you have, and I'm just thinking this thought process, and you can disagree, counteract it, whatever, but if it's a concealed weapon and your shirt is over it, you'd have to physically move your shirt to get to your weapon. So there's a split second that you would have to move your item of clothing, or wherever it may be, if it's your ankle, and pull up your pant leg to get it out of your sock, if it's on your thigh and you gotta pull up your skirt. I mean, it's an object over the weapon, so that, I think, to think that through may slow it down a tad. I don't know. If someone wants to disagree with me, please disagree with me. Educate, let's talk, that's great. Do you see what I'm saying with her question with that? It's a physical object over the weapon, so I don't know, I could be way off the mark.
Yeah, I mean, under those circumstances, you could certainly argue that it would be, it would take extra time to remove whatever's in that way to be able to.
That's, I think, what her question was. Was that your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I think that's what she was referring to, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. And if you could just stay there for one second. In the ordinance that we have written in front of us, if you could read the last paragraph according, because I just heard Class A misdemeanor, and here it's Class C misdemeanor. If our town attorney could just read that last paragraph and the way that it should actually be written, help us out there, because I thought, one of the first ones I had read or heard was the word trespass from our first.
It's been revised, the June 2 revision changed it from a disorderly conduct, which was a Class C misdemeanor, to a simple arrest for trespass.
That's what I thought it was.
The police chief thought that that was more in keeping with what we were trying to accomplish here, and also a little bit more enforceable, because disorderly conduct's kind of a broad range.
So read us, if you could, the trespass paragraph, where it states trespass in the class whatever, instead of the way that it's written here. What we have is the old version, we need the revised version?
Well, it just says, if after failing to comply with the instructions of the peace officer, and the offending person fails to leave the municipal building, then such action shall constitute, shall constitute, well. Probably should say, then such person shall be subject to arrest for trespass.
Shall be arrested for trespass? See, there's revisions going on.
Such person shall be subject to arrest for trespass.
Instead of constitutes a breach of peace?
Correct.
Okay. And Catherine, what's printed in the back? Does it have this old paragraph and not the new one? Okay. Okay. So it's the word shall, and then what's her?
Yeah. I'm sorry, what was the question?
After the word shall, it will say what? On the second paragraph, second sentence?
And, the offending person, so if after failing to comply with the instructions of the peace officer, and the offending person fails to leave the municipal building, then such person shall be subject to arrest for trespass. That's how it should read.
And the correct statute would be criminal trespass in the first degree? Fifty-three A dash one oh seven is where the language comes from.
So this whole, this whole, the general statute, that would all be corrected to reflect the correct numbering? Okay. And that's a Class A misdemeanor?
It's a Class A misdemeanor, yes.
Thank you. And it's also up to three months in jail or $500 in fine, is that correct or no?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the exact.
Sure.
Exact penalties.
No worries, I just wanted to, as long as you have the Class A misdemeanor, I suppose, and that, because that has the penalties.
The language within that statute would match what we'd be looking to accomplish.
Got you, correct, right, that would be the good reflection. And that statute's fifty-three A?
Dash one oh seven.
One?
One oh seven.
Thank you, one oh seven. Got you, thank you. I just wanted to get that clarification there, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come, please?
I have a question for our officer here.
Sure.
In your research for this, I don't know if you reached out. Does it get their perspective and what their experience is within?
We did not, no. You know, for my respect.
And in hopes that you're representing the G P S. Are you willing to do this? So were you disorderly entering a question?
Thank you. Sir? Please address the microphone so we can get this, so all our listening audience can also hear this. And thank you for your input. Thank you, everyone, for your input.
With regard to the question that was just asked about how this, how this type of law is affected the rest of the state, C C D L keeps a very good record, and they get reports of strange activity regarding firearms. To my, in my memory, there hasn't been very many reports, or if any, other than Woodbridge, about firearms being restricted, where people have had falling afoul of whatever the local registration, or local ordinance might be. There's a few other people here, the C C D L members. Anybody else, anybody here aware of anything to that effect? So it's minimal, it's minimal. Most of the gun, most of the permitted people in the state are pretty responsible. If you say, if you were to pass a law, an ordinance that says you have to cover up, you're probably gonna find, most of the people that have permits are gonna comply. I don't think you're gonna recall the police.
Thank you, sir. Please. Oh, Mr. Dillon, Mr. Dillon, before you speak again, can I ask if there's anyone else that hasn't spoke yet?
Chris is gonna speak, but I have to, if I could just clarify.
Oh, please.
I just wanted to clarify, the county that made about the NYPD case, it wasn't the Supreme Court, it was the Manhattan Supreme Court. And the victim, or the person that brought the suit, was Joseph Lazito, if anyone wanted to look it up. I guess another comment, too, while I may indulge you, if you can indulge me. Anyone that has a permit in the state of Connecticut takes that seriously. We can debate whether or not it's really valid according to the Constitution, whether I need a permit to carry, because I haven't been convicted of anything, and even if I'm convicted, do I get my rights back? So that's a whole bigger issue. Anyone that has a permit is gonna follow the law, because a person with a permit has a home, a house, I mean, a house, a car, a job, a family, they don't wanna end up in jail, right? So if I come to Town Hall and I get asked to either cover up or leave, I'm gonna do that, because that's within the law. Again, we're gonna pass laws about people that will already follow it or be responsible, and the people that don't want to be law-abiding, this doesn't affect them at all. So that's going on nationwide right now. And there's a lot of shootings, there are, every one of them is horrible. It's not a lot, it's not the law-abiding people, but there's a whole lot of other issues going on, but if, so, thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Sorry to have a handout today, I had a rough day at work.
Sorry to hear that, and that's okay. Just hearing you speak is important.
My name is Rick Balboni, Twenty-three Debbie Drive. Just a couple of questions about this, I didn't know what the format was, so I didn't really prepare much of anything. Thought it was gonna be more of a back and forth, which I was really hoping for, it's close, very close to what I was expecting, but not what I wanted. This thing under official, defining what it is, why is the justice of the peace excluded?
That's the definition of official from, I think the town, the town of South Windsor already defines it.
Okay.
That way.
Then where was official used in the thing? That's, I'm just trying to find out what a justice of the peace is being excluded from.
It's a good question.
Thank you, I try.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see the word official used anywhere else. I think the intention was to have this applicable to not just town employees, which are already prohibited from possessing firearms in municipal buildings, but to also have it applicable to other people that participate as town officials, so myself, for example.
Oh, so it doesn't already apply to them?
Correct, because we're not town, because I'm not a town employee, nor is the town council.
Okay.
Right, so I think that was the intent of that.
Excellent. Where was the next part I had a question about here? Ah, yes. How does concealing one's tool, is the word I choose to use, how does concealing it promote peace, good government, and the welfare of the town in any way whatsoever? Anyone?
Good order, peace, health, safety, and of the town and its residents, and the management of the business of the town while inside any town building. And where this, that came from was Mr. Maniscalco, who is our C E O, is responsible for, help me, Mr. Maniscalco, with the, with the emergency management, the health and welfare safety. Your duties and responsibilities accountable to the state fall into this, and this would be the management of that, and that's where that statement came from.
Oh, I was just covering underneath the prohibition rules and regulations, Section Three, Part C, where it says that when you're inside a municipal building, keep it concealed from view as to promote peace, good government, and welfare of the town. I just wanna know how concealing one's tool promotes peace, good government, and the welfare of the town?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
So for me, I guess I come from a different school of thought, which is, if something that I do is offensive to one person, then I have to ask myself the question, why am I doing it if it really doesn't matter to me? So when I read that, to promote peace, good government, welfare of the town, for me, it would suggest that if I'm doing something that offends my brother or sister, then do I need to do it at all? Because that's what that person may be thinking of. Whether it's true or not, perception is reality. And so from that, from that point of view, if someone comes into a municipal building and they feel intimidated, or they may have a PTSD or something to that effect, then that would take away that person's peace. And so, for me, that's what that means. And so if there's something that's offensive to my brother or sister, in this case, our town of South Windsor, then that's how I look at that. So I just wanna answer your question in the way that you're asking it.
Could we hold that thought just for one minute, please? It is seven o'clock, I need to start the regular meeting, so could I have a motion to suspend the work session, so we can call the seven o'clock regular meeting to order, please? What's that?
What's the plan? Are we gonna come back to the session?
We're gonna come back to the work session, yes, absolutely, I just need to suspend the start of the.
Motion to suspend the work session.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. And I'd like to call the meeting of the South Windsor Town Council. Stay right there, don't go anywhere, stay right there. So the regular meeting of the South Windsor Town Council to order for Tuesday, July 5th at 7:00 P. M. And I've called the meeting to order, now I'd like to hear a motion to suspend the meeting until after the work session, we can go back to the regular meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Any opposed? Not hearing any? The motion carries, now we're back into the work session, thank you. I was just, had to do preliminary stuff, go ahead. Sorry, parliamentary procedures. Oh, I gotta call the work session back in order? I didn't do that, okay. So I would like to call the work session back in order, is that what I said? I'd like to, do we need a motion for that? Yes, I'd like to have a motion to call the work session back into order, please?
Motion to put the work session back in order for thirty minutes?
Absolutely, thirty minutes, absolutely. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Thank you. Okay, now I think we're done.
Okay, I'll repeat my question, I've actually heard Counselor King say that before, and I definitely appreciate that, that those are his feelings, and I would like to hear other people's feelings or valid reasons as to why they think that concealing, I'll call it a weapon right now, concealing a weapon promotes peace, good government, and welfare of the town.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, please, Counsel Paterna.
I think from our, from my point of view at least, I'm responding to people who are working in Town Hall, and to them, their perception is, they're more comfortable if they don't see the weapon. That's what we're hearing.
Okay, again, feelings, I understand. Anyone with a subjective or objective viewpoint on exactly why it promotes peace? Because the last time I read through the Constitution, which hopefully you all did after I handed you your pocket constitutions that night, but I believe that they call it the Bill of, is it Bill of Feeling? No, no, it's the Bill of Rights, not the Bill of Feelings. So my rights do not end where your feelings begin. That's pretty much all I had to say about that. I appreciate Mr. King, Counselor King, Deputy Mayor King, and Counsel Paterna actually speaking up a little bit, that was a little bit of transparency, more than I'm used to from this council. I think there was one more thing I wanted to know. No, I think that pretty much covers it. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Balboni. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Oh, wait, one more thing, one more.
This isn't the time or the place, like I said, I prefer a different forum, like I believe Counselor Evans had suggested, a forum where we could be together and do stuff and maybe have some demonstrations, because I would love for the police officers to show how difficult it actually is to get their pistols out of their holsters. I believe you guys use a level three retention? And I personally use a level two retention, which it does keep it from being taken from other people. Most of us also keep it approximately fifteen percent canted forward, making it harder to be removed from the back. I've taken multiple classes on retention, as I'm sure the police officers will also take it.
Mr. Balboni, could you, the microphone, thank you.
Sorry, you were facing that way, so you were talking about.
When you turn, you're not recorded, we can't hear you very well.
I'm sorry.
So you were talking about level two versus level three, if you could make that clearer?
So the levels of retention, the, I don't wanna reach for my gun, but the levels of retention in a holster, you either have a zero level, which means it's in there and it can be taken out at any time. I have a level two, I basically have to push a button before I can even remove this, meaning it can't be removed easily by anybody else. It's also canted forward at fifteen degrees, keeping it so that it's more difficult to have someone remove it from the back, not impossible, but more difficult.
May I ask, gun folks that carry one on their hip know various types of holsters to carry? I'm asking you, just like I would ask the gentleman who came before us before and another gentleman from C C. They're all educated folks who are out there that are educated about holsters and the seriousness of it?
Most of them should know, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I personally, in my class, as some people in this room know, do not advocate for open carry without classes taken on retention, because I personally think that would be... Um, because I personally think that would be the most embarrassing thing that could happen is being killed with your own gun. But like I said, the officers have a class three, therefore they need to remove with their thumb and press, depress a button in order to remove their, uh, their pistol from their holster. Um, and then a lot of people conceal, and just for that reason, to keep other people from taking it and to, for the element of surprise, is what I hear a lot. I'm not saying I don't need an element of surprise. I'm not John Wick, as we talked about before. That's all. I just, I really would love to have a session where we could show these things with unloaded guns, uh, different types of holsters, and just really educate the town. I think that's what we need. You know, I would love to see rifle classes back in school. I would love to see the kids learn and respect guns as opposed to be taught to fear them, which is what teachers do now. It's horrible. Horrible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balboni.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, so, um, I did take the training class that Mr. Balboni teaches, um, and he does, in the class, talk about what he just discussed up here. He does talk about in his class. He is an NRA-trained instructor, so I would hope that the others do as well. But I know for myself that everything he said here tonight, he, he says in his classes. So that knowledge does get out there.
Thank you. And there was, yes, sir, please come forward.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I spoke on June 6th. My name is Brendan Malone. I'm not a resident of South Windsor. Live at 104 Third Street, Southfield, Connecticut. Uh, I spoke in opposition of the ordinance in June, and I maintain my stance. Uh, I guess my personal feelings are, uh, you know, and I had described how I was a justice of the peace. I used to come into South Windsor Town Hall to file, uh, you know, uh, marriage licenses with the town clerk all the time. Uh, for me personally, uh, I just feel like, uh, people like Mr. Balboni and others who carry firearms legally and, uh, you know, within, you know, the law, um, you know, they take on an incredible responsibility. Uh, they put on their firearm every day, uh, and, you know, they make a commitment to our communities that, that should something, should a tragedy occur, that they're, they've made a commitment to intervene. Uh, and that's how I see it. Uh, you know, I, I don't have a firearm. I don't typically carry a firearm. Uh, but, uh, it, it makes me very comfortable, uh, knowing that there are people just like Mr. Balboni out there who, you know, should something happen, uh, you know, uh, have taken that level, uh, of, uh, you know, preparedness and training. So I just wanted to bring that, uh, to the table. Uh, I also wanted to mention, I know the, the point of education was just brought up. Uh, you know, I'm not sure if, if this town council is aware or not, but, uh, the Connecticut general statutes were recently changed about two years ago, uh, and it's a requirement for all, uh, school systems in the state of Connecticut to teach firearm accident prevention. So I'm not sure if that's something that the town of South Windsor has really looked at yet. Um, it was part of a, a bill that was called Ethan's Law, uh, where a, a young man was tragically, um, he was tragically killed during, uh, uh, you know, the finding of a firearm. Uh, and they were, uh, two, uh, some youths were, uh, were, uh, unfortunately, uh, playing with it, and, uh, one of them was unfortunately killed. So I just wanted to bring that to the table. That's something I think, I think regardless of where this ordinance goes, I think moving forward, that would be something great for the town to look at. Uh, you know, it's all about, it's, it's really all about saving lives when it comes down to it. People who are in favor or against it, we all want the same thing. So, uh, so anyways, I guess, uh, I guess that's all I had. So thank you very much for your time. I have, if you have any questions, I'll do the best I can to answer them, or?
Well, thank you very much for your comments this evening. And if you have any questions?
All right, thank you, thank you so much.
Please come back. Anyone else would like to speak to the council, the town attorney, the police department, with any questions concerning the ordinance? Mr. Kaptounas?
I just have another question. You, um, brought out about official, that language. Does that affect, like, you as council members? Are you, if you have the life that you can carry? Can you carry as, or are you considered an employee of the town at, as your purpose here? Or, or is, how does that affect you in that? I know, because where I work, we are not allowed, we could not carry. We can't leave it in our car. It's, I'm in a gun-free zone. End of story.
The intent, the intent of having the official included in this, uh, ordinance is to say that the town council, that the, the list of officials listed there, Board of Education, people on Planning and Zoning Commission, and other boards and commissions who are volunteers and not employees.
Correct.
Would be bound by this ordinance as well as the public, so.
But, but as, they're not employees, so they can carry, is what I'm saying. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Correct.
Because they're, you're not, I, I know I have to, as a board member, we go through, you know, code of conduct. We have, we have ethics that we have to.
A board member here in town, sir, correct?
Yeah, I'm a board member here in town.
Could you please just specify, and the town attorney does?
On the zoning board of appeals.
There you go, zoning board of appeals. He's a board member of the zoning board of appeals, yeah.
If, if that, if I was to conceal, could you, could I conceal carry to a meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not considered, because as an employee, you can. Like, if I was an employee of the town, I could not carry on the property.
Correct.
That's, that's what I'm wondering. Thank you.
Any other questions? Please come forward. My friend from my morning meeting this morning at ten o'clock. Nice to see you again. I did go to lunch, by the way. Everyone was asking me. I went to lunch today at the senior center. First time my senior adventure, so don't pick on the senior. Go ahead.
My name is Kathy Belanger. Uh, I live at 906 Twin Circle Drive in South Windsor. I have strong feelings about this. I wish we didn't even have to think about having an ordinance. Uh, I know that times have changed. I think there's a difference between those people who are strong gun advocates and the rest of us. They just really believe that it's okay to have a gun and not a lot of prohibitions against it. But I think if we had an open carry, that would create a lot of fear among the rest of us, even if it isn't legitimate to have the fear. Seeing a gun on somebody walking around in buildings or wherever, I think is a little much. It reminds me of the Old West. Um, I, I, if we're gonna have an ordinance, I don't have, uh, a strong feeling against the concealed, because it's true, you don't see it. I mean, we don't see them now, and who knows how many people have them? But I do feel that's safer. But I also have a question. It, in the meeting this morning, we were talking about the fact that the, um, I hope that's not my phone. That the federal government has, um, schools in the Capitol as no, no guns. Do schools include childcare centers?
That is your phone, by the way. And we'll get that answer to your question.
It's not mine.
That's all right. It'll, it's gone.
Okay.
Uh, does it include childcare centers?
Attorney Corolla?
I don't know off the top of my head. I believe it does not. I think schools are municipal school systems, a K through 12 type of public schools, maybe private schools, but I don't know about like a childcare center.
I don't know, maybe if.
I could look, I'll look into it. I don't know off the top of my head.
I think it should.
What about an educational institution that receives federal funding? Because some of the schools, no, the daycares receive state funding for their lunches maybe, or to help pay for the daycare while they're there. I don't know if that's state or federal funds that come through. But I would think anyone that receives federal funds would be governed by the federal, and then the state funding would be governed by the state acts. I, I don't know. I'm just saying. It could be a theory behind it. I don't know.
And the library is considered open?
It's a municipal building.
Okay. That's basically my thoughts.
Thank you, love. Thank you for coming out. Please come forward.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm not from in town. My name is Wal Cupson. I'm from Middlebury, Connecticut.
Oh, excuse me. Are you the 203 number? Did you happen to call?
No.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Not at all. I'd like to address the, the, the comments of the previous speaker in terms of not feeling, not feeling safe because she sees an open, a weapon. And I'd like to ask your, your question, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, but Mr. Balboni here is carrying openly. Do you currently feel, do you currently feel safe?
I, I don't feel comfortable.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay.
Yes, sir, yes. Speak with us, please. Yes, just, we gotta get you in the microphone, so go ahead.
So my question was whether or not she felt safe in this room with Mr. Balboni, who is in fact open carrying. And I'd like to explore why that is.
And she said she feels uncomfortable?
And, and that's, and I respect that. Um, but I would ask her to just take a moment to sort of reflect on that and realize that she is in a room with a person who's open carrying. Um, I guarantee you that any private citizen who is open carrying is 110% legal, responsible. Um, there's just no doubt about that. Um, and I always offer to people who say they feel uncomfortable that if you ever feel uncomfortable, please come with me to the range. I would be more than happy to introduce you to this. Um, I have yet to have anyone take me up on that, and I understand that, because as human beings, we don't like to explore things that go against our feelings. But I would just like everyone to just pause it in for a moment and ask themselves why they don't feel comfortable, um, Mr. Balboni, with a firearm. I've never met Mr. Balboni, and I feel perfectly comfortable with him, um, because I know he is, you know, anyone who, again, who open carries is responsible. And just, we've been in this room now for more than almost ninety minutes. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep. Anyone else? Please come forward. So we have ten minutes left of the work session, so if anyone, if you have any questions, please make sure you come forward to ask them. Good evening, Mary.
I would like to ask that same woman if she feels uncomfortable next to a police officer with a gun. What's the difference? They're a person. Mr. Balboni's a person. There's no difference. They're all, they're instructed. He's, he's the one that best to instruct them. So there is no difference. It's just somebody's thinking. As far as, um, this whole issue with the, um, ordinance, the ordinance speaks about keeping the peace, order, health, and safety. But the Second Amendment is not about any of those things. The Second Amendment is about freedom. And freedom means to have a choice. You start taking away choice, you have no freedom. Every one of you, the police officers, everyone in the military took an oath. I want to remind you of the oath you took to defend and uphold the U.S. Constitution and all of its contents. We send young men and, we send men and women to other countries to defend freedom. And now in our own town, you want to take away freedom. Where the military people that took this oath, this oath does not have an expiration date. This oath is to God. Do your words mean that little to God? You send, our, we send our young people to countries, foreign lands, to defend freedom. You send your, your own blood, your children, to another country. And yet, when freedom is being infringed upon in our coun, in our own town, or in this country, in democratic states and towns, might I add, people just think, oh, it's important to, to defend freedom in other places, but not in your own town. Things have gotten out of control, and the reason of the First Amendment is not for hunting, not for peace, not for order, health, safety. It's for, to defend ourselves against the government that turns on you, that tries to take away your rights, the Bill of Rights. So people need to be thinking what this issue is about. It's not about safety. It's about freedom. And anyone who forgets that should be ashamed. Ashamed that you forget your own oath. That's what I would like to just remind people. It has nothing to do about feelings. It's about freedom.
Thank you, Ms. Corolla. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Paterna?
I, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I don't know if you were here earlier, but this is not about taking away anyone's freedom or rights. This is simply a, an ordinance to say if someone has a permit to carry a weapon, they should conceal it or keep it as open carry. That's not taking away anyone's freedom or rights.
You know, I know, we know. It's opening the door. We know you're just opening the door. You're not gonna just say, oh, yeah, we're gonna take away your rights. We're gonna take away, you know what the hot topic is about the Second Amendment. You're not gonna just openly.
Maybe you know that. That's not what we're presenting tonight.
Well, you spoke about everyone in this town hall. Like, you know what everyone in the town hall thinks about the feelings of, of open carry.
Hang on, let's be respectful.
You spoke about open carry in everyone in the town hall. You know what everyone thinks in the town hall? I don't think so.
No, ma'am, we've had many contacts from many residents and employees.
Fine, you can make up numbers all you want. You're politicians. Do we trust you? No. You can make up numbers. You could say, well, many people have called. That means nothing. I could say many people. We don't know what that number is, and you can't speak for every person in the town hall either.
You're right. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, Counsel Evans.
Thank you. I just want to also add that everyone else has come up, has been extremely respectful, has shared their point of view, and I really appreciate that. I also think it's very difficult for some people to come and share their, um, opinions and feelings on this, and I think we need to be respectful of the people that don't necessarily, necessarily agree with what we're saying and, and not to put them on the spot to try to convince them otherwise. So I, I just, I think it would be appropriate to, to not, like, recall what people have said and, and address that. So thank you all for coming. I really do appreciate the bravery of some who have spoken, so thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for holding this. It does actually mean a lot to the town residents. I think it's, this is beautiful. This is exactly the way that the democracy should be, to be able to sit here and talk and hear your voices and let us communicate back and forth with you. This is a phenomenal thing. I wish that we would actually do more of this. Um, it means a lot to me, at least as a community member, and I, I know it means a lot to the people that also took the time to be here, even people from other towns, and I think that that says a lot, too. So thank you all for that, and I really do appreciate you and appreciate that. Um, a couple of things I just want to ask. Is this paving the way possibly to make gun-free zones in all the town buildings? I'm sorry if I missed this. If it was brought up earlier, I couldn't get here until now.
No conversation, no intention. I've had no conversation with anyone. I don't know about other counselors, but I can speak for myself that that conversation was never entertained by myself with anyone else.
Okay. So my other question would be then, so if, this just comes down to basically whether or not someone can see the firearm or not see the firearm, how does it really solve any safety issues?
It doesn't. This isn't a safety ordinance.
So it's a feelings ordinance?
Counsel Evans?
It's a feelings.
Oh. No? Okay.
So, so, I mean, I, I mean, that's not in a disrespectful way. I'm not saying that to belittle anything. I'm, I'm honestly just trying to call a spade a spade. Um, so it's basically just an ordinance based on feelings?
Go ahead.
Counselor Paterna? I think we're trying to respond to what people in town are saying to us, and yes, people do feel uncomfortable, so it is in that realm, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, so, what I'm going to try to figure out, or what I think that's a really important aspect to bring up is, I wish that Counselor Lydecker was here, because obviously she has a wealth of knowledge into the legal system and everything. Ordinances nor laws or anything like that should ever be made because of feelings. If we did that in this country, we would have a very different looking country. So, and I think that anything like this, it really does set precedence then about, well, all of a sudden, you know, it makes me uncomfortable to see police officers in here. All of a sudden, you know, maybe someone could come in and say, well, we've, they feel like there's been police brutality, they've seen it maybe on TV, now all of a sudden they don't want police officers in here because it makes them feel uncomfortable. So, then what? Well, you guys concealed firearms because it made other people uncomfortable, well, what about someone else who all of a sudden is like, seeing, that's really triggering, I don't want to see, I don't want to see a police officer. So, does that mean then all of a sudden we make an ordinance, no more police officers that can come into the building? I mean, it really does set a precedence that could really run the gamut of all different options being put on the table if we're going to, going to set precedent within, for feelings. My other thing is that I want to say, my husband is an NRA teacher, he has, or an instructor, he's been instructing for many, many years, but he also has a wealth of knowledge in firearms, started when he was young, he was in the military, and honestly, he's the best shot of anyone I've ever met or ever seen. I trust him more than I trust the gentleman behind us. He is probably the best marksman that we probably have in this town, and I don't say that just because he's my husband, I say that because I know I've seen it. He also is very familiar with a lot of the police, a lot of the state troopers that are around, and he practices his, with his firearm constantly. People that are, that really do respect firearms, that carry firearms, that enjoy the art of a firearm, I mean, the history of firearms is incredible, if you've ever watched any of the History Channels or backgrounds on them, how they're made, it's actually fascinating, they're beautiful, they really are a work of art to a lot of people, they see them that way, they see them as a beautiful tool. So, when you have people that enjoy their Second Amendment and they enjoy firearms, there's more to it than just being like, oh, it's just something that I want to carry around with me, there's more to it, there's usually a passion there. And these people enjoy going out, they enjoy going to the range, it's something that they have a lot of skill in, a lot of knowledge, usually a lot more than police officers, because I can tell you right now, most police officers qualify once a year, once a year. My husband goes to the range at least one to two times a week in practices. And he does carry a weapon for work, he carries.
Ms. Chung, I'd just like to bring you back to the ordinance, only because we have one minute left before we have to close.
That makes sense, okay, I'm sorry, I'm rambling.
I'm sorry.
I'm proud of him, so.
I'm sorry, thank you for, it's a great thing to be proud of your spouses.
But, at this same time, what I'm trying to say is that a lot of people that do exercise their right to carry, there's a reason why they do it. And they're usually a lot more advanced skilled-wise, and I, and I'm sorry to say this, than even the police, because a lot of the police, they put on their weapon, they put it away at night, and they never touch it until they have to qualify again. So, speaking to, of seeing Mr. Balboni in here with his sidearm on, to me, I look at him and I go, whoo, like, okay, I know that if something was to happen, I know that that man has enough confidence, he's carrying his weapon, he's showing that he has his weapon on him, he could protect us, and he's probably going to be a better shot than the gentlemen that are behind us, sorry, gentlemen. But, most likely, it's true. So, I think that if we're going to base things on feelings, then we're taking away actual safety.
Thank you, Ms. Chung. So, at this time, I'd like to, is, any council members have any comments, please? Not seeing any. At this time, I'd like to close the work session and call back to order the Town Council Regular Meeting, of which we had suspended for 30 minutes, so we are back in session with the regular Town Council meeting. I'd just like to say thank you to everyone for coming this evening, I'll look forward to the open discourse, conversation, discussion, and if anyone has any questions for, going further, farther, going farther, please submit your questions to the Town Council members, and we can forward them on to the appropriate folks and maybe get some answers. So, I thank you very much for showing up this evening. Have a good night. And if we could before, thank you, Sergeant Cleverden, if we could take a five-minute break, if, just so everybody could, while we clean out the room and everything.
Or they can stay for the meeting.
No.
Motion to take a five-minute recess.
Recession for five minutes, yes, a motion? Is there a second? No, we, no, we only suspended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-minute recess, please. An adjournment on that, motion to adjourn the work session, I think, so if we could get that for the record, Counselor Merrick?
Motion to adjourn the work session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no ones opposed, the motion carries, thank you. So, moving on now to the Town Council Regular Meeting, calling the meeting to order, could we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, we did.
Yes.
Didn't we do roll call already?
No, we did not, we did that for the work session, because we didn't start this as of yet, we called it to order and suspended it. Oh, go ahead. Counselor Evans?
Here.
Counselor Kavaski?
Here.
Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Paterna?
Here.
Mayor Pendleton?
Present.
Deputy Mayor King?
Here.
Counselor Kazakowski?
Here.
Counselor Lydecker? And Counselor Gamble. Thank you. The mayor's remarks this evening, I'd like to state that we just had a work session, an open work session of open conversation concerning the ordinance, which I think was very productive and helpful for citizens to come out, to voice their opinion, to state their concerns, ask questions. It was, it's the first work session that has happened in, oh goodness, Ms. Perry, do you happen to have an idea how long it's been since we've had a work session? Quite a long time, many years. Counselor Paterna? About six years, right, I believe? So, some folks didn't understand the point or the purpose of a work session, and knowing that the council has the opportunity to have a work session and to discuss any topics and gather more information, that's a great way for us to have transparent government and to discuss what happened. I would, I would like to say first and foremost, if we could have a moment of silence for the families that were celebrating Independence Day and the Fourth of July in Highland Park, please, and for those that have perished, and for the ones that have to deal with this catastrophe. Thank you. Thank you. And moving on this evening, we do have a short agenda, and I'm sure that we can get through this. So, now we have the adoption of the agenda, Counselor Kavaski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any changes, not seeing any, not moving anything around on the agenda? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion carries, communications and report from the town manager, Mr. Maniscalco, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, let me draw your attention on the table, for all of you today, there was a schedule for revaluation, I know Counselor Gamble had asked for that at your last meeting, kind of outlines all the important dates for our residents, as well as for all of you, as we do head through a revale over the coming year. So, lots of good information on that document, and we'll see what we can do to try to provide this publicly somehow, in some type of electronic format. A couple other items that I wanted to bring to your attention, first of all, we have heard from our tax collector, in terms of our collection rate for the last fiscal year, she's finished up with a 99.5% collection rate, which is probably the most impressive collections rate I've seen in the decade of work that I've done this.
Wasn't last year 99.3, I believe?
Last year was 99.24.
Fantastic, this is the best so far, fantastic.
This is the best so far I've ever seen, ever.
Congrats.
It really should be recognized, so, pretty, pretty good. Also, wanted to bring to the attention, for the council, that I did attend the crumbling foundation insurance meeting, so as all of you are aware, I'm a member on the board for the Insurance Consortium, and at our last meeting, we celebrated the fact that the insurance consortium has now completed and fixed 600 foundations throughout the region. So, that's a lot of work in that period of time. Funding seems to be coming in pretty good from the state, and they're continuing to work through their processes in terms of getting other individuals with crumbling foundations fixed, so that was a great meeting to attend. Additionally, I had the opportunity to go to the Strategic Planning Committee, they have kind of abandoned the idea, probably because we can't find anybody, but they've abandoned the idea of trying to find a consultant to do our strategic plan for us and guide us through that process, and instead, we're probably going to be moving forward with doing kind of the strategic planning piece ourselves, but working with other consultants to help us with some of the surveying. I have been in communications with Yukon in order to help us in both design as well as administration of that survey moving forward. So, I do have a meeting, I believe it's next week or the week after, with some individuals from Yukon to further have conversations about it, identify the direction that would work best for the town.
Mr. Maniscalco, did, were you able to research the back documents on our last strategic planning?
Yes, we do.
And find out the consultant firm that we hired them?
Yeah, we, we have looked back, we've identified who that is, we can't seem to find them, that individual, but, you know, really, the committee was focused on identifying a consultant that was local in the state, and I, I just, I tried turning over every rock I could and was not able to really identify anybody.
Yeah, sometimes we might have to go out of state, but I believe ours came from Massachusetts, yeah.
Yeah. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring everybody's attention, you know, the police department held their award ceremony last week, and I think it was eye-opening to myself to see how many awards were handed out to our officers for saving lives within our communities over the last year, and I wanted to recognize them for the great work that they did. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Counselor Paterna?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Maniscalco, you mentioned surveys, I'm assuming that's a citizen survey as part of the strategic planning?
Yeah, so, they're talking about conducting surveys for the citizen, with citizens, in an effort to try to identify, you know, direction of what, what is important for our residents in the town of South Windsor, and they're also looking at multiple medium of delivery, so that way we could get the largest swath of individuals, because not everybody's on the computer, not everybody goes to the library, not everybody goes to the farmer's market, or wherever else it might be, so.
Maybe looking for an indoor pool.
Yeah, so, we're trying to see, we're going to try to see how much we can do with everything, and thankfully, due to the council setting aside the funds at one of your last meetings, we do have the resources of. we do have the resources available to help, you know, really put some gasoline behind that and make it go.
So you touched on my main concern and that is that the last time we did a townwide survey, I think the biggest criticism was we just didn't get enough responses. So we're kind of trying to look at numbers, but not really getting a representative, a good representative sample, so I hope we can improve that.
Yeah, I would also point out the last townwide survey that I saw was, I think, 18 pages long.
Yeah.
That makes it a little challenging to get full responses and, you know, I think what we're going to be focusing on is something short and sweet and to the point to try to get some good responses and a lot of, a lot of responses.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Deputy Mayor King?
No, I do not.
Okay. Council Kavaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to speak to this later on, but since Mr. Maniscalco brought it up in his town manager's report, I also had the opportunity to attend the police ceremony along with some others up here. One of the things I found very interesting that night is, like Mr. Maniscalco, it was eye-opening to see just what our police department deals with during the 12 months. But what struck me was I had an opportunity that night to speak with Mr. Maniscalco, with the chief and with the deputy chief. Not one of them took for granted what these officers were doing. They all spoke about how proud they were of the officers and you could see it when you were talking with the chief and with the deputy. These men work with these officers every day, yet they were still in awe of what they did. And I just want to compliment Mr. Maniscalco and the chief and deputy chief because that shows, I hope these officers understand they are not taken for granted, that there is definitely a lot of respect for what they do.
And Council Kavaski, I'd like to add to that to just state that it's not just what they have to deal with, it's the fact that the chief, the deputy chief and Mr. Maniscalco tap into what these officers carry within themselves, either they're going to school, they're going to college, or they're military, like all the other aspects of who they are as a person within their field. So that, that's also, their personalities, their sense of humor, their organizational skills, their, whatever the character is of that person is also acknowledged and recognized by the chief and the deputy chief. And used, whatever services or whatever abilities or qualities or characteristics this person has or skills, that's tapped into by our police department. And they acknowledge the quality and the value of our officers, which is a great thing. I just want to add to that.
It really is. It was also, also why I mentioned it was not lost on me that the biggest reception of the night was for Officer Mason when he was brought in through the site.
Oh, I love it.
So I don't think that was lost on anybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would actually echo the sentiments of Council Kavaski and I would just say that, you know, as I said during the pending ceremony for the chief, you know, I had the opportunity to talk with a lot of the officers in trying to identify what we were really looking for for our next chief at the time when Chief Custer told us he was going to be riding off into the sunset. And there was a term that came up and that was used by specifically now the deputy chief, at that time he was a lieutenant. And he said, you know, we just try to do things the South Windsor way. And we've been working on trying to identify what the South Windsor way is. And, you know, many of our officers obviously exemplify that. To be able to put words to it, I believe, is a little more challenging sometimes, but really it starts at the top with the chief, it works its way down to the deputy chief and the rest of the other officers as well. And they've been nothing but impressive to myself and the others. And we're really a very fortunate community to have the department that we do have.
They're just, I think the South Windsor way is looking at the person as a whole and not just looking at them as just a police officer, you know, defending the law or helping out someone that needs help, but really looking at the person as a whole when we go to hire folks. And that's a really nice quality to have within our department. So I agree with you on that absolutely. So thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. And moving on in our agenda, we now have public input. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on any item on the agenda? Is there any person from the public that would like to speak on any item on the agenda? Is there any person that would like to speak on any item on the agenda? Not seeing any, we'll move on. Number eight is adoption of the minutes from the previous meeting. Councilor Evans?
Adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular town council meeting on June 27th, 2022.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, go ahead.
May someone make a friendly amendment? Wasn't this a special meeting?
Town council's special meeting. On the top? What are you asking?
In our, in our agenda, it says regular.
Which should say, I mean, our agenda should be corrected to say minutes of the special town council meeting of June 27th. Did you read it that way, as special when you read your?
I did not read it that way, but I can reread it if you need me to.
Please read that correctly, yes.
Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the special town council meeting on June 27th, 2022.
And now is there a second? And is there any corrections? And if you notice that there is the revised action minutes, which is here, it says motion added. Everyone has a copy of that. So all those in favor? Any opposed? Any changes? Discussion? Not hearing any? Any opposed? No? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Evans. Moving on, communications from the in-laws, officers and boards directly responsible to the council. Is there anyone that would like to make a report from any of their meetings that they attended? Not seeing any. Councilor Evans?
Thank you. I'll just briefly share that on June 28th, HRC held its pride event. I was unable to attend, but I heard it was very successful. I don't know, Council Paterna, if you want to share anymore because I know you were able to attend. I heard it was very successful and very well received by those who attended.
Yes, thank you, Council Evans. It was a great event and the panelists were terrific. Brought a lot of different perspectives to the whole category of LGBTQ issues. And I think I want to give special thanks to Ria Saxina, who was, who is a student at South Windsor High School, just finished her junior year, so she'll be a senior in September. And she moderated that program like she was a professional. I give her a lot of credit for doing that. You know, I, junior, junior high, I mean, junior of my high school year, though I was probably playing a video game somewhere, so she was just amazing. So I thank, and the HRC thanked them for putting it together.
Absolutely. Thanks, thank you, Council Paterna. Council Kazakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to report that the Planning Zoning Commission held a couple of public hearings last week. They held a public hearing, or continuation of a public hearing for a zoning text amendments and a site plan to accommodate a residential development at Evergreen Walk. They closed the public hearing and did not decide that night. They also continued a public hearing on a proposed warehouse building at the intersection of Sullivan Avenue and Kennedy Drive. They also closed that public hearing, but they did not decide.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any reports to make? Council Paterna, do you have them?
No, I don't, sorry.
Thank you. Moving on to reports from committees. Is there any committees that have a report? Mr. Roberts, do you have any report? Has your subcommittee that we just formed in our last meeting had an opportunity to meet yet? Thank you. Is there any reports from any other committees? The personnel committee should be meeting this week on Wednesday, I do believe, that, no, we're not meeting this week on Wednesday? Okay. So we'll be, okay. So we'll be moving on then? Now we are on item... Thank you, Ms. Perry. On item number 11, the first reading, and that will be, that's not assigned to anyone? Who was it? Council Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
All right. Consent agenda, first reading, resolution appointing Resh Jaya Prasad Yu as a member of the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission and postponing consideration of this motion until the town council next regularly scheduled meeting. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Resh Jaya Prasad Yu as a member of the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission for the term ending November 30th, 2022 and postpones consideration of this motion until the town council is next regularly scheduled meeting.
And does anyone have any questions? Comments? Discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor? Any opposed? Not hearing any? I just, I suppose I should have had my discussion and my comments or questions. Council Evans, this does complete a full slate now on this board and commission.
It does not complete the full seats available, but because there will be a quorum, this commission will be able to start to meet. So once we have the second reading, my ask is that we schedule that meeting and get this commission started.
Great, thank you. And moving on to item B, the second reading, none. Item C, none. 12 unfitness business, none. Number 13, new business. And Council Lopez, I'm going to give this to Council Paterna, please.
Resolution approving the refund of taxes to eight South Windsor taxpayers. Be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves a refund of property taxes to eight South Windsor taxpayers, the total of said refunds being $4,358.37 and as more fully described in attached Exhibit A.
Is there a second? Any deletions, discussions, abstentions? Not hearing any? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing any? The motion carries. Thank you, Council Paterna. Council Lopez, do you have your light on for to read? Okay, we have a discussion item, 13B, plan for paving, Mr. Stetson to be present. Mr. Maniscalco and Mr. Stetson, if you could bring that forward to us, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll draw your attention in your packet. There is a tentative plan, I think as all of you are aware, Mr. Stetson and his crew put together a pretty good plan moving forward called Pavement for Progress with the idea of paving and renovating much of our infrastructure within the community, or one of our largest pieces of infrastructure in our community, our roads. As a result of that, we really have to now figure out a way to put the resources behind it to actually make it happen. And what we're providing you with is kind of an outline of what we're thinking in terms of funding for how this plan would work. Of course, all of this would be financed through bonding and how that bonding would then lay out. Essentially, what the hope would be is that we could probably hit like a November, a November referendum because that would save taxpayers money, being able to hop on the ballot, we'll kind of piggyback on the ballot for that. And what we're, what we're actually looking at is a larger dollar amount with the intention that we would spend that money over time. So I think if you look at the total plan, it's probably around $35,467,576. The idea is that while we, we're looking for the authorization for the town to approve that larger amount, those amounts wouldn't be bonded till outer, till the year, as years go by. So the whole thing wouldn't be bonded at once, it would be smaller amounts in chunks over the years as we go. Mr. Stetson's put together a list of roads of what he thinks they would probably be able to accomplish. I would say, you know, in full disclosure, that could change. There could be priorities that shift that modify that. And we also included some sidewalks in here as well to be looked at. The last caveat I'll just throw out there, there is a placeholder for other potential projects with Public Works. We do need to look at our Public Works garage and possible expansions at some time in the future, but we just wanted to put that on there to add a full disclosure. So what that would cost, what it would look like, I have no idea. But this is kind of the plan so far. I don't know if you have any other detail you want to add to it or thoughts you have?
Thank you, Mike. You captured it pretty well. I think it's important to note here that this is really the only option at this point in time to fund meaningful world work. Councils many, many decades before you made the decision to pull the money out of the operating budget. So in order to do work of this magnitude, funding source like a bond referendum is really the only way to get it to happen unless you're going to increase a lot of taxes all upfront. And by asking for all this money, you know, Mike touched upon, that we'll be only asking for small allotments of the 35 million. And what that does is it reduces our exposure to the interest and we can kind of temper our expectations. This tentative financial plan follows the Paving for Progress Plan road for road. We would probably temper our expectations down the first year, not attempt to do $9 million worth of work due to the, just the timing of all. If the referendum passes in November, it wouldn't leave much time for us to sharpen our pencils and do all the upfront work that it takes to get these projects to be a success.
Does anyone have any questions? Council Lopez?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I have some questions. This does not list all the roads within our community. This only lists the roads that are intended to be paved based off of the...
Pavement Condition Index from VHB. So all these roads have a rating of roughly 80 and below, just like school grades, you know, they're low Cs, high Ds. Another thing to highlight here is that if we don't fund this now, it's only going to be more expensive in the future. And that's through a couple different variables. One being, you know, obvious, everybody's talking about it now, inflation. The second is cost of deferred maintenance. I'm sure you've heard that concept talked about before, but the longer these roads age, the more expensive it takes to replace them. So if we can get a program where we have consistent, sufficient funding in the future, we anticipate to not have to spend four to five million dollars a year. It would only be a couple million to go and mill and overlay the road and not do these full depths reconstructions because the roads have just been not funded properly many, many months ago.
And all of these roads that are listed are on our town website based off of the coloring, the red, the yellow, the blue, the green and so on, whatever the legend reflects?
Yes, and again, Mike touched upon, none of this is written in stone. You know, anticipate which roads we're going to be doing first to become kind of a hot button issue because everybody's going to want their roads done first. So we're trying not to paint ourselves in any corner. You know, I, I know personally, I take a lot of phone calls from a lot of residents. I would love to get Graham Road taken care of, Abbey Road, the Farm of State's neighborhood with Connecticut Water in there. I know a lot of folks are looking to, you know, have the roads be brought up to par, you know, for resale value, quality of life, and so on and so forth.
Well, I have to acknowledge that this is not a small undertaking. This is what you've accomplished with, one, identifying our roads that are in severe need of repair or have classified our roads and whatever repairs that they're in. I know that Mr. Gannick had worked on that for years because I remember seeing that when it was first introduced. But to revisit this and to have the undertaking of coming out and creating a game plan to take care of our roads is a pretty impressive undertaking. So I want to say I appreciate you for doing that and appreciate you for looking at this, figuring out what it would cost, figuring out where it's at on its, on its maintenance, on its repair, where we're going in the future with, you know, the, the, yes, $35,000, $35 million is not going to cover every road in town. However, after these are completed, the $35 million and we are in year, where are we at with this, at that year, 2026, 20?
Just fix you all the way to 2028.
2028, I'm sorry, 2028. So then after that, then throughout these years up to 2028, you will be reevaluating other roads as we move along to continue the process going forward? Is that, it's not just fix these and we're done?
Unfortunately, just like us, we keep aging and the roads are going to keep aging. And I appreciate the shout out. You know, we definitely building upon what Gannick built here and, you know, I love a challenge. And you can't manage what you don't measure, so without measuring all these metrics, we wouldn't be able to come and give you guys a salient plan.
And so like I said, once this is done in 2028, along the way, you're still going to be reevaluating other roads within our community. So road maintenance is something that doesn't go away. It's always there. It's not going to be, you know, pay it one time and that's it, we're done, we're going to walk away. Road maintenance is always happening. So after that, you're going to be coming back to us later down the road, somewhere down the future, and you're going to say, again, we'll revisit roads and we'll say this is what's needed and this is where we are. And hopefully the town will get up to a spot where, what's a good color out of the legend? Yellow?
I would be comfortable or I'd be happy with being able to mill and repave, you know, about 10 miles a road per year for two to three million dollars. you know, about ten miles of road per year for two to three million dollars. And that's very easy construction, where the contractor just comes in, mills, repaves, and we don't have to do all these borings, have to replace the base of it. And we're not mentioning the drainage system in this town. It's older than a lot of the folks in this room, and that too needs maintenance and a little bit of TLC. We have been going around and lining systems where we can. We go in camera all the neighborhoods prior to doing the roadwork, so that we can fix any of these storm drainage issues. Believe it or not, we do reach out to utilities to notify them that we're going to be doing this work, and we try to correlate that work to happen before we pave a new road. That doesn't always work out. It's important to note that the utilities have a right to go into any road and to install their utility, and all we can do is create a moratorium for a period of time to prevent them from that from happening.
So to get our roads, again, to get our roads all up to a good maintained level, would that like be colored yellow on the map? Would we ever get to that spot where our roads are in A-OK, A, B, C, D range, instead of our C, D? We don't want to go down lower in the alphabet, obviously.
I travel a lot around New England, and, you know, South Windsor roads comparatively to upstate Maine, Vermont, are really, really good condition. So I think it's, it's all in perspective. But yes, you know, in about eight years, I'm hoping that the map doesn't have so many different colors and, you know, we're...
That would be fantastic. That'd be fantastic. I see the Pleasant Valley Road is on here at one of the top of the list, and I was asked today over at the senior center, when is Pleasant Valley Road going to be done? I hear so many phone, I get so many phone calls, I hear so many complaints, because Pleasant Valley Road is horrendous right now. When will that be completed, especially down? Is that, is that bridge going to, not the bridge over the Podunk, but the other bridge over that Little Brook? Is that going to be dealt with, do you know?
Both those, both, both those bridges are going to be rebuilt, the one over the Podunk and the one over, I believe it's Plum Gully. You know, I would say, in reality, we'll probably be breaking ground on Pleasant Valley Road spring of two thousand and twenty-four. And the reason for that is, is, you know, we're looking at doing sidewalks all on that road. There's got to be three hundred residents. We all need easements from all of them to put those sidewalks in. Additionally, all the drainage on that road is a hundred years old, it all needs to be upgraded. So the project's still in the design. We're still sorting out how we're going to fund the, the bridge over the Podunk. But it's, it's going to be a very, very big project. It's going to have an impact to all the residents that, but it. We're looking forward to, you know, getting that project taken care of and taking out some other challenges.
Can I ask a favor then? And then maybe, I shouldn't say ask a favor, but could you please take a look at Pleasant Valley Road and where it stands right now with the, either the potholes or the unpaved areas? A lot of folks are complaining about it damaging their vehicles and knowing that it's going to be farther out. Couldn't we just maybe do a little overlay of a good strip there by the Plum Gully brick?
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure if you guys have noticed, but we did do a in-house mill and fill program. At the end of every fiscal year, we take all the value that we find from all the other contracts that we have in town. If there's any money left over, we hire a miller to come in and mill out these known pothole problem sections, and then we come in with our own in-house staff and repave it. It's a, it's a great program. It's grown up a lot. In the past three years, we've gone from maybe, you know, a hundred square yards to, I believe this year we did over two thousand square yards. And I'm really proud of the guys. Their production rates are constantly climbing, and it's unfortunate that we don't have the, the funding or the time to do that all around town. We wish we could, but we'll definitely get Pleasant Valley Road on the list.
Thank you. And Mr. Maniscalco, with the financial plan that you have laid out before us, and the game plan for the bonding, and then issuance of those bonds, and then possibly going back and get maybe different financing after this, there is a possibility in the future that you could save us money on any of these interests or anything with this bonding? But this is, in reality, really the only way to get our streets done, unless we want to impact the citizens directly with increased taxes on a regular basis, correct?
Correct. So as Mr. Stetson, Stetson said, the council a number of years ago made a decision to move forward with financing our roads, and actually took the, the funding for a lot of our road maintenance out of the actual general operating budget. As a result of that, once you've made that decision, it's kind of hard to go the opposite direction. If that's a decision of the council, we certainly can do that over time, but it would be exponentially expensive, expensive. And plus, we would still need to do this plan in the interim period to get us there. So it, given the situation that we're in now, with having the past be, being the way it is, we really do need to move forward with financing our roads moving forward to be able to keep that important asset to a degree that we need, so.
And this financial plan will have the least amount of impact on our taxpayers by doing it this way?
Certainly. Yeah, so as we, as we move forward with bonding projects and large project, projects like this, the way we would do it is we would probably float the project cash for construction out of the town's savings account, for lack of a better term, that, and then over time, when we were ready and we saw that there were more favorable rates, and we had other projects that we could lump together with this, we would go out to market to finance it, and then we would get the town the best rates we possibly could at that time.
Thank you. It's, it's similar to what I had mentioned today, like with the HELOC, where you would tap into your, your amount of money that you have to do a, a project within your home, a new roof, or new driveway, or windows, or siding, or what have you. It's similar to that. And I'm just bringing, trying to bring it down, you know, to the, to the taxpayers, so they can understand the process of the financing of the bonding to get the roads completed.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to note that if this is approved, the town won't be able to all of a sudden say, well, you know, we only did half of it for roads, and now we're going to use the other half for something else. It will only be able to be used for roads, and that is it.
Correct.
So, and, and that, I think that's very important to note. Additionally, just from an administrative standpoint, moving forward, if we're going to be able to hit the referendum in November...
Correct.
We would need the town council to actually approve the resolution at your next meeting in July, and then we would be moving forward with explanatory text and other things to kind of explain the process that we're going to go through.
And, and when is the forty-five day mark? September?
I think it starts in September. So unless you're going to have a special meeting in August, which I don't think we really would like to do, I think everybody's kind of itching for that summer break at this point, I think we, we would probably need to get something approved at your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Thank you, Mr. Stetson. Does anyone have any other questions? Councilor Evans?
Thank you. So I would be willing to meet in August, because we know I tried to shift our calendar around. I don't think it would, it would not benefit us to meet in August if we need to. But regardless of that, I do think the roads are clearly a necessity. I would love to see a higher priority made for sidewalks. I'm not sure how there is a way to work this into the plan. But looking at Ellington Road, it's listed in two different areas. Ellington Road's a very long road. Do we know what sections that would include for Ellington?
So I was referring to the section by Pleasant Valley Road, and then the section from Sullivan going up towards Sand Hill. There's an apt opportunity for sidewalks, and truth be told, it's not going to be an easy option or exercise for, for the group here. You'll have to go out to public hearing for it. Not everybody loves sidewalks, so it's going to be a challenge to get everybody on board with, with that sort of initiative. But I also put several other locations on here, other than the ones that were proposed every year out, and I look forward to teasing out which streets you guys would like these sidewalks on.
So I think I mentioned that last meeting, especially near Pleasant Valley School, there's not sidewalks, and there have been families walking, so I think that would definitely be a great spot to have a sidewalk, as well as Dart Hill Road. I've heard that a lot as well. And then it says on the, on the third page, Dart Hill Road LOTCIP. What is that?
So Dart Hill Road is a LoTIP project.
What's it?
It's a LoTIP, it's another funding source. And I'm just trying to capture that, we're also going to be doing Dart Hill Road, it's just not included on this list.
For the, for the streets, not the sidewalks?
For the streets, yeah.
And then as far as, I see Governor's Highway, Pleasant Valley Road, and Chapel Road on there, I know those are roads that we have heard a lot of truck traffic. Have we considered integrating any kind of traffic calming features to help with that when we're redoing those roads? Or might that be considered?
Traffic calming features to make trucks not drive on it? Is that what you're saying?
Make it less desirable.
I think that would make it less desirable for a lot of cars to drive on as well. You know, I think if, we've had a lot of conversation about traffic calming features, specifically as it related to Laurel, Laurel Street. They all come with their challenges, they, they, they come with their benefits as well. I think those roads in specific, if you look at the history of, of a number of those roads, with the design of the town, when they went through planning and zoning, a number of those roads were designed with the intent for carrying truck traffic. So while people may have moved there prior to the truck traffic actually using it, that was the overall long-term intention of some of them, and they're larger connector roads across our community. So I, I think we can certainly talk about and look at what things we would want to put in place, but I also would want to make sure that we aren't making our town exponentially prohibitive to businesses conducting commerce within our community. So I think we would need to cautiously look at that.
Right. So, so Pleasant Valley Road, we mentioned, is a hundred-year-old design based on the drainage. If you look at Pleasant Valley, it's a very narrow road, it's, it's not typically something you would think a truck would initially choose to travel down. We're very fortunate to have Route Five and access to two ninety-one, so I think anything we can do to make those streets more neighborhood or local traffic friendly would benefit of us. So I, I really appreciate the plan, I think there's a lot of thought in this, but the details that we could include to benefit some of our residents further, I think we could, should consider as the project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Evans. If I could just touch upon that, you know, traffic safety is near and dear to my heart, and I'm, I'm very close to the subject matter. And I think it's, it's counterintuitive for a lot of the things that we're moving forward with. It's not beyond my imagination that once Bezzelbub Road is done, we're going to want traffic calming out there, because now we've gone and made the road wider, we've made it smoother, we've gone and taken away any sort of fear factor, like trees on the side of the road, now there's a sidewalk. So making the roads wider and flatter just increases the speed, and it creates like just a whole other headache.
And painting lines on the street tend to help, though. Painting a walkway line, even though we do have the sidewalks, or a bike path, or painting the yellow lines or the white line to give a back, that's, that's always beneficial to, that can help. A simple painted line will get people to slow down. Yeah. So, Councilor Kazakowski?
If I may just follow.
Councilor Evans?
You all are very much the experts, and I trust your judgment on things, and that's why I feel like there probably are features that you know more about that could be utilized than any of us know about. So I, if those things could at least be considered.
So I just thought of a solution to the truck traffic. We just need to put a bunch of low bridges around town.
The bridges to nowhere, just make them really low.
Just some low bridges.
Over, over pedestrian bridges or something.
There you go.
Thank you. Councilor Kazakowski?
Another solution, thank you, Madam Mayor, other, another solution to low bridges are trees. I know trees are the bane of, you know, tran, traffic engineer's existence, but trees also provide opportunities for traffic calming and make the streets feel safer and, and nicer places. That wasn't what I want to talk about. Earlier, you had a lot of conversation, discussion with the mayor about Pleasant Valley Road and the work that needs to be done there, and just correct me if I'm wrong, really none of that is going to be done unless it's funded through a bond.
We have, we have some funding to do Pleasant Valley Road now, that's already been bonded and approved.
Okay.
This would, I think it completes Pleasant Valley Road the rest of the way.
Pleasant Valley, just shooting from the hip here, is about two million dollars short for the balance of the roadwork and the bridge. The bridge is going to be split with the state.
Okay. And then, as the mayor pointed out, this is not a comprehen, obviously not a comprehensive list of all the roads. But do you have a sense of a schedule for all of, all of our roads? You know, based on the last time they've been worked on and anticipated life cycle of, of the improvements made?
We, we have the information readily at hand. It's not something that I take time to really study, because there's so many unknowns. I don't know what the funding levels are going to be in ten years, or, you know, how much asphalt's going to cost at that point. But there is definitely a roadmap for routine maintenance every year, every fifteen years.
On a fifteen-year cycle?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilor Kazakowski. Okay, thank you for coming this season, I see no other questions, but thank you very much for informing us on this.
Good for the opportunity, guys.
And at our next meeting, Mr. Maniscalco, you'll give us more information or more discussion item before the action item, and we can have conversation at that point in time.
We can have another discussion item before that. I have already communicated with the town's bond attorney in order to get that resolution drafted, because a resolution to actually issue bonds and get approval through a referendum is a little bit of a different animal than your normal resolution. So I've already had that conversation and engaged him in trying to start some of those wheels moving forward, and was kind of waiting to have the conversation tonight to see if there was anything different outside of that initial one. So I think we're all kind of moving in that right, same directions.
Do we have to have a public hearing to come to an agreement to go out to referendum for this?
I do not believe you do, but I'll have to, I'll have to just do some quick research to make sure.
For our whole timeline on everything, please?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Maniscalco. Okay, moving on, we have item fourteen, Passion of, Pa, Passion, Passage of Ordinance. Not having any, not seeing any. Moving on to item fifteen, Public Input on Any Matter. Is there anyone from like the public that would like to come and speak on, Public Input on Any Matter? Is there any person from the public that would like to come and speak on any item on any matter? Good evening, Mr. Linnicky.
Good evening. Boy, how things have changed since the election in South Windsor on November second, two thousand and twenty-one. No mayor has ever denied an item to be placed on the town council's meeting agenda. An opinion had been obtained from the then-town attorney that says it is the mayor's discretion on what goes on the agenda. Again, this has never been the practice of past mayors. The precedence has now been set. South Windsor is now seeing Washington DC-type politics in our town. A town's attorney's opinion is just that, an opinion, not a rule. You preach equity, but you don't live by it. You talk open government, but you keep your actions behind closed doors. Upon receiving the video for the June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two council agenda-setting meeting, due to my FOI request, it was stated by the temporary clerk of the council, there were no first or second reads for the consent agenda. On tonight's agenda, hmm. And I have an email that was sent to the then-clerk of the council on June eighth for the agenda-setting meeting on June twentieth, way in advance of the due date and time, which included the form with the names of the two individuals being nominated for appointments, and I was one of them. This form should have been discussed at this June twentieth meeting and not ignored if it was not received. If the mayor has the discretion on what is to be placed on the agenda, then forms submitted with names placed in nomination should be discussed at, at the agenda-setting meeting and not ignored by the mayor. Why weren't these nominations discussed? Is this how the mayor is going to conduct business? This is government in secrecy and not open government. In closing, I will leave you with one more question. Am I being discriminated against because I am a Republican, a woman, or both? Think about that for a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linnicky. Moving on to communications from the council, item sixteen, is there any? Not seeing any. Moving on to executive session, we do not have one this evening, and so item eighteen is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Uh-oh.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Be safe and have a great evening.